Call the meeting to order, stand for the pledge please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to have a motion to enter an executive session for contract purposes.
I'll make the motion.
Second? Motion by Amador, second by Stacy, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We shouldn't be long.
Famous last words.
Yeah. I need a motion to command an executive session.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
First by Amador, second by Stacy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Superintendent report, Dr. McGannor, you're up.
Thank you. Graduation this year will be at the high school. The students prefer it here, we can do it, but we'll have our four chairs grouped together for each graduate in the front section in order to save space so that we have the distance between each set of four chairs rather than between each chair. Then there'll be another tier up top with the same configuration. And we should be able to fit everyone who wants to take part as a spectator with that configuration. We're still working on finding a venue for the prom. We have to have social distancing according to the state in which it's in. So there's a possibility that the prom could be elsewhere other than in New York. Summer school will be first through 12th grade, the current K through the 12th grade, in conjunction with the healthy kids, and it's based on teacher recommendation. And what we're looking to do, especially with the elementary, is to address skill deficits that are identified by the teacher as needing remediation. And some of the deficits have occurred due to the structure of the education this year. Teachers have done a miraculous job, but teaching over the internet is not the same as having a teacher in front of you. In the high school, it's based on coursework. And students with a 40 or above average are eligible to take the course during the summer. Students with lower than a 40, it's pretty clear that they're not going to be able to do a whole year's work in six weeks. This year, the state tests, the reasons that will be given is the Algebra I, Biology, Earth Science, and ELA. There's no word yet on the social studies, whether or not there'll be a reasons. And this is why the state has always said, "Do not use your reasons as the final exam." Because anything can happen with the reasons. We're going to have swing sports, softball, baseball, track, for modified and varsity for each. We are currently in the winter season for football, soccer, and cross-country. Both of them have modified and varsity teams. We had a vaccine day, which I have to thank Bob DeForre for arranging, and Nancy McGraw at County Health. About 45 of our faculty and staff were immunized, and there'll be another session for the people that didn't get their first round in about a week and a half. The folks that got their first round the other day will get their second one on Good Friday. Your question was asked of me, and I can understand the confusion. Why can't we hire some substitutes and keep everybody hybrid? It's not a question of not having enough subs. It's that the teachers that we need can't come into the building. So we have to go virtual. The kids are still getting an education, but they're all synchronous at home. It's unfortunate that one kid can interact with 14 adults and require them to all have to be out of work, but that's the rule. It looks like in the fall, based on how many people get immunized, that they'll relax the distancing rule and the rule for being out after you make contact. Tonight, we're going to swear in Tracy Ferreira as acting superintendent in my absence. I'll be out from March 22nd for at least a couple of weeks. I have all the faith in the world in Tracy's ability to continue to run the district in my absence. And I will be in daily contact with her, and I'm sure it'll be a worthwhile experience. In terms of my future with Eldred, if my back is fixed and I'm able to function, I'll be here for quite some time. If my back isn't fixed, that situation may change. But they tell me I have an 85% chance of a full recovery. And I have two surgeons working on me at the same time, so hopefully they'll meet in the middle, and I'll be okay. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. McGannor? From the board. All right, I gotta back up here for a minute, gang. So 301, approval of the administrator contract, I need a motion for that.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second. Any discussion? Motion made by Stacy, second by Kristen? I need a vote. Nancy? Kristen? Stacy? I'm yes. Myself is a yes. All yeses, thank you. Mr. Krebs, you are up.
And I would like also to thank the board for helping out for us and appreciate your support and the administrators of the district. We have a great working relationship as a team and with the board, so we appreciate everything that you do for us, and we thank you for your support on the platform.
As for elementary, principal report, we just concluded our pre-K registration time as of Friday, March 5th. That was the cutoff date that we gave folks to get their information into the district for our pre-k program. We get 16 registrations out of a maximum of 18. So every family in the district that had their information to us by last day, March 5th, we sent them a notice that they have a spot here at Eldred for their pre-k for next year. Since March 5th, we've had two more families come into the district. So therefore, at this point in time, we have 18 who are included with the maximum number. And so any parents that come into the district who should have a spot for pre-k going forward, we have that waitlist. That waitlist this year, we have finished out our waitlist, so we had a couple of pre-payers that left the district, so we were able to enroll children into our pre-k program. So that number of half or 18 and 18 is pretty consistent where we were this past year. Our kindergarten, the current pre-k class of 18 students, as of Friday, March 5th, we had five kindergarteners that registered for the district. So we have a total of 23 at this time that have registered for our kindergarten program for next year. And usually, some come in and some leave, as we know every year, between now and the first day of school in September. This past Monday was the next group of students. We have all of our third graders now in our building. So currently, we have all of our kindergarten families in our building, all of our first grade families in our building, and all of our third grade families in our building that wish to sit there for children full-time in person. The last group that I have scheduled coming to the building will be our second graders, and that will be the Monday after spring break. And that will include the amount of kids that we have in our building. I've had conversations with Dr. McGannor that unless there is some lax lapsing of the rules in the state of New York, we may conclude the remainder of the school year with our configuration right after spring break. So if something should change, we'll be back to you as the board to let you know what's happening. That is all I have for you tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Krebs? From the board? No? All good? Okay, Mrs. Ferreira, you're up. Come on over here.
Listen when I say here.
No. All right, so what we've got coming up, we've got a couple of different activities coming up. One, the PSAT will be given to school ninth and 10th graders on April 14th. So if you would like your child to sit for the PSAT, we just need to contact Ms. Garen. The SAT will also be given during the school day to the 11th and 12th graders on April 27th. Both of these tests are free, and it's during the day, so it's not a Saturday. They don't have to miss work or anything like that. We just got notice that our ASVAB will be given to 11th and 12th graders on April 15th. So let Ms. Garen know by March 30th, so we know how many ASVAB tests we need to be ordered. Homework hall, we are starting up homework hall. We have sports, so we need the after-school help for academics. It's gonna be Monday through Thursday in the library from 2:15 to 4:00. We are asking students to sign up the day before through a Google form. All the students get noticed on Fridays for the week, and they can sign up for multiple days, Monday through Thursday, or pick a day. Late bus is also provided for transportation. Along with homework hall, we do have math tutoring, and that's offered one by the Mu Alpha Theta Math Honor Society, and that's on Wednesdays from 2:15 to 3:00. So if you have any questions or want to schedule the math tutoring with your peers, that is, you would contact Brittany Fonstock or Ms. Zub. Now, Ms. Zub, Mr. Jennings, and Ms. Ricardi also offer math tutoring on Tuesdays and/or Thursdays from 2:15 to 3:00. You can always reach out to your math teachers and schedule that time. Fall sports practice will resume March 15th, which I know the kids are very excited for. And then we also, because of the weather, we kept having to delay our academic and attendance awards for the second quarter. So finally, with warm weather and no snow, we are gonna distribute those awards next week and the following week. So kids will be getting their certificates. The last thing, and I put on in front of all the board members, we have been approached, and we have two advisors for the Sullivan 180. It's a healthier generation program, and that's gonna be head by Denise Federer and Kelly Praxler. And the purpose of this program is to engage our school district in promoting health and wellness among students, staff, parents, and in our community. Sullivan 180 will be funding this program. So any initiatives that are derived from this program, that is being paid for by this Sullivan 180. It's not out of our pockets. Sullivan 180, they have brought together various organizations throughout the county so that county school districts know what services there are out there and how to partner with these organizations. And the overall goal of Sullivan 180 and this organization is to improve the health and wellness of all of us. So on that list, some of the programs they're doing, they're offering Zoom, they're offering in-person. There's also grants that we can apply for, and it's not just school, but also community organizations can apply for these grants. So, and that information will also be going out to the faculty tomorrow, so they have, you know, community members have access to this program as well. So the other thing I have is a quick presentation on, I have been meeting with parents and teachers for this targeted school for improvement. So I just wanted to give you an update on our action plan for the rest of this year, summer, and into next year. So Tina's got it pulled up, so we can look at that. And then with this, we start our action plan, and then once Tina gets it... So if you wanna go to the second slide. And the targeted school for improvement, this is where we were put on the state's targeted school for improvement list due to our ELA and math assessment results for a subgroup, a small group of our kids. So yes, we get put on the list. The good thing is, we get about $100,000 from this list to use in order to improve our math scores, our ELA scores, and all of our academics, our absenteeism, and everything else. So just go to the next slide. The one thing is that we had to put on this TSI plan is the chronic absenteeism. And we've looked at just attendance notifications as far as making sure that like after, we need to be in contact with the parents in the home a little bit more frequently regarding absence. So attendance notifications, they'll go out instead of after accruing eight absences. We're gonna back it down to five absences, 12, eight absences. We're also including those awards. So attendance awards will be given at the end of the quarter and at the year. And then we're also looking at, you know, including prizes, because we like those incentives. Incentives can get kids here. So then we go to the next slide, and it is the timeline for next year, '21, '22. Again, we're gonna do the attendance notifications, the attendance awards. We're also looking at starting a mentor program for next year to kinda connect staff members with the students. Again, if they feel a connection with school, they will want to come to school. We're also looking at gathering a resource, like a contact list, for the families and commuting members, which a lot of that we can get from our partnership with Sullivan 180. So that's a good thing. And then we go to the next slide, which is stakeholder communication. Spring, what we've been doing, utilizing the school website, our social media, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, newsletters. We've also utilized remind, mailings. We do need to streamline School Messenger. We've had some problems with School Messenger with some people getting the notifications, some people not. And then we also need to make sure we ensure that parent communication goes to both parents, guardians, in the same household or in two different households. So we do have to ensure that that happens. Along with that stakeholder communication for the following year, so we'll go to the next slide, is again, do the same thing, but add to that. Some of the kids have asked for like a comment box in the cafeteria and set one up virtually, like how can we make school better? And then monthly updates from administration. We do have the BuzzFeed newsletter coming out of GRM, and then there will be a monthly newsletter coming from the high school. And then quarterly updates to the parents, to the kids about our ELA and math progression, and that includes progress monitoring. Another TSA requirement is the ELA. And again, we're looking at spring and summer professional development. And then also with the tech piece is utilizing those breakout rooms, utilizing other tools, writer's workshop and things like that, that can be done virtually and in person. And again, the idea of utilizing incentives and showing kids how to self-assess themselves for reading and their own reading progress. So we are looking at that stuff. And that comes with PD from the spring and the summer. For next year, which I know at GRM, they do this, and they will continue this, the mystery readers at the elementary schools, communication with parents and students regarding literacy goals, how they are, the progress. Possibly, we're gonna try to look at, you know, a book club, Book of the Month, which we do do that through the library. We would like to expand upon that. There was also something called a Reading Olympics we're looking at, and it goes along with the countywide reading challenge. Again, it incentivizes the idea of reading and reading for fun, enjoyment, but in turn, that increases our literacy and our literacy progress. Math is the third goal that we have to include with the TSI. And again, we're looking at professional development for the spring and the summer, utilizing those virtual tools, the breakout rooms, the digital tools for math skills, the tutoring, also looking at what incentives can we use for math and to get the kids to enjoy math and do, and work on progress monitoring. And we also offer, you know, we already offer the peer math tutoring, and we're gonna continue that. For next year, we are looking at utilizing online math platforms to practice skills. We have some in-house, Waggle, HMH, iXL, and looking at which ones are the best to check for progress monitoring. Again, communicating with our parents and our students. It should say literacy goals, it should say math goals, I'm sorry for the typo. And then again, continuing with the peer math tutoring. The last two slides is an additional goal we've set up, is our RTI, Response to Intervention, and putting in our MTSS or multi-tiered system of supports. We are doing spring and summer, and that's again, part of utilizing FastBridge. And that is to check for the social and emotional learning check-ins. That's also to look at, you know, where do kids need the most help? Professional development for our teachers in Tier 1 and 2 strategies. And then we have to survey our teachers, you know, what do our teachers need in order to implement these, the RTI, MTSS, to be successful? So for next year, we are also looking at continuing the FastBridge, to do those social and emotional check-ins, and also expand FastBridge so that it can also cover the RTI. And then continue our professional development for Tier 1 and 2 strategies. And then also to increase our differentiation of Tier 1 strategies in the classroom for next year and build upon that. So that just kinda gives you what's happening with the TSI. We met several times, and I really appreciate the parents giving up their time, because these were not quick meetings. And we brainstormed a lot, and I really appreciated the community's help with that. The only, the other thing I have is our student report. She is at work, so she was not able to join us. But she did send us, everybody got a copy of this, it is the Eldred Central School PBIS Spring Plant Sale. So they are doing this on Friday, May 7th. They said outside of each building entrance from 12 to 4, and you can pick up hanging baskets, vegetables, annuals, and six-packs. You can actually order a flat of 48 plants if you would like that. They can also mix eight different six-packs of plants. There is a preorder form, and we will send that out, and it is due April 19th. And they even said, you know, if there's something on here you really want, just ask. They can probably get it added to the list. So that is from the student report. So that is it for me.
Any questions for Ms. Ferreira? From the board?
Just one.
Yes.
I don't know about this FastBridge. Can you walk me through what is that, how do they work that? They log in online and?
It is a quick, like 10-minute, 10-minute, 10-question assessment. So they would log in online, and it's answering questions, and it covers two things. We, it covers the state regulations for the social and emotional piece, and it's basically like a check-in. We're also looking at FastBridge because they do have a math and literacy piece to it, so we can add those check-ins to it. It's for progress monitoring. They're real short snippets, and it gives us an idea of where they are in that timeframe. Scott, I know that has some more information on FastBridge, because you have looked at it more in-depth for the elementary school. What can you add to that?
Pretty much, it's a social, emotional, learning, online assessment piece. It's a couple of minutes. Mrs. Kerstman had provided us the resources for that, and it goes along with the state requirement like Tracy mentioned. And we thought it was one of the best programs out there, we're gonna start looking at the social, emotional, learning piece. But then we also noticed that they do have the math and ELA assessment. Right now, we're using STAR assessment that you're familiar with. And we're going to pilot that next year to see if we need that for, might transition to the FastBridge for that, also if we're looking for a year.
And some of the online, like the reading and math, those progress monitoring assessments can take several minutes, like 30 minutes. This is 10 minutes, so you don't eat into instructional time, and you can still get the same information.
And who reviews the responses once they're?
That would be Scott and I, the building principals. And then we would take that back to the RTI team to see where do we need those kids at.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that feedback anonymous?
Yes. Oh, absolutely.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Ferreira.
Thank you.
Mr. Krebs, Caleb, you are up.
All right. I'll take. I'll take your seat. Your short column is like a...
Oh, yeah. Well. That's just the, that's just my talking points.
The highlights, yeah.
He says it's a short one, I said it was. Just the talking. That's the budget.
Bring your slide up?
Yeah, you can bring that up. I think you can go to the first slide too. The second one. All right, so we are in March now, so it's time to start planning the budget. One of the biggest pieces that was holding it up was what was gonna happen with the tax sorcery that was going on in the, with the Millennium Pipeline. That was settled, as you know, at a special meeting, we approved that settlement. As a result, I now have a good idea of what's going on with taxes. Now, how we designed this budget is, the budget is only a 1.3% increase total over last year. Now, that's the total budget. The tax revenue is actually a decrease of .3. Now, how we designed it, in conjunction with the superintendent, is we wanted to make sure that the hit from the taxer proceeding was below 3%. What's going to happen is, the assessment of the pipeline is gonna get reduced to 62 million. How taxes are calculated is you take the entire tax levy that was proved by the school and divide it by all of the value in the district. Since the value of the district has gone down, everybody's taxes go up to bridge that gap. Now, right around 3.2% is what taxes would go up. So we reduced our tax levy to keep that number below 3. And that was the desire, from what I understand, of the board and the superintendent. So we are making sure that taxpayers aren't hit too terribly by this decrease in property value. Otherwise, that's, our budget is going to increase actually, because there isn't, in the current executive budget, a decrease in our state aid this year. Also, the 20% that they had claimed they might reduce last year did not come to fruition. So we actually still have a small increase in our overall budget, because I'm anticipating that we're going to get our full state aid next year, and our tax revenues are gonna stay pretty close to what they were. How we allocated this, as you see up there, is largely to instruction. Instruction received the biggest increase out of all of those categories. Instruction went up by 7.1%.
That's why we're here.
Correct. And so these additional funds, we are funneling into instructional initiatives. You can go to the next slide. So I broke it up into instructional initiatives, safety initiatives, and then facilities and transportation initiatives, as to what's new in this year's budget. Now, keep in mind that we don't have to spend, last year, we put 350 aside. That money we can now utilize to help upgrade our facilities. Last year, we had to put it aside in case we owed it to the taxer. The Millennium Pipeline settled, and they do not want a refund. So we don't have to use that money, that goes back into our general fund. You can go to the next slide. So the instructional initiatives, the major ones that are in our current budget, as it stands here in front of you, is the creation of the summer school That is a K through 12 summer school, fully staffed at the Eldred Elementary School, GRM. That includes, that $100,000 figure in there includes, and you don't see 15,000 of it, if you go into this budget, you're gonna see 85. That's because summer school transportation is budgeted in the transportation line, not the summer school line. But I anticipate a transportation to be around 15. That is for all expenses, that 100,000. That is for the additional work from the administrators, that is for all the teachers, that's for transportation, that's for food, that's everything. And that is for all grades. Another area that we are looking to invest in is in special education. We are moving to a push-in model, that's something we had discussed last year. Because we were so uncertain about our revenue last year, we'd never hired the special education teacher we had discussed. That is something that is added in this budget and is actually on this board agenda as well. And that is gonna be necessary in order to move into a push-in model, which is the model that most other schools use, if I'm correct.
It's, it's the way it should be.
We'll also be adding a sign language program up at the high school for students who struggle with French, Spanish. Many of them do much better in a sign language program. That is an estimated cost of 35,000, 30,000 for the program itself, and then we will need to have a teacher of record and a teaching assistant or a teaching aide in the class with them. Oh, you can go to the next one, sorry, Tina. We have a few safety initiatives that we wanted to invest in. The elementary school's fire system is near the end of its life, so we will need to upgrade the fire panel and the wiring involved in that, which is, could cost up to $70,000. However, that cost also includes the first item, which is integrating our security systems for both buildings. Currently, we use two different vendors and two different panels for our security system, and so they can't be centrally monitored, they have to be monitored individually. We would like to merge those systems and add of the fire system to all be handled by one vendor, and that can be controlled centrally.
And if we don't upgrade, we won't pass inspection.
And if we don't upgrade, we won't pass inspection.
Additional laminate?
The additional laminate in the elementary school. We laminated a number of the cafeteria windows and the front office and, I believe, the vestibule.
Yeah, the purpose of the laminate is to hold the glass together in the event that it's, it receives a shocking flow. And as you know, we have downdrafts here, downbursts. If one occurs over the elementary, and that glass that's way up in the cafeteria ceiling, and in other places in that building were to shatter and fall down on kids, it would be a tragedy. Once it's laminated, it would fall like a, you ever see a car with a broken windshield? It's like all held together by the plastic. And this is imperative that we do this for the safety of the kids. It may never be necessary. Hope to God it's not necessary. But if it ever happened, and we could have avoided it, that would be criminal.
We can move on to facilities and transportation. This is an area that we intend to invest heavily in. The writing's on the wall, especially in the technology area with so much of it, everything occurring virtually now. Our school is upgrading its infrastructure. Now, we did a number of our network switches, and we have very few of them left. We are upgrading, we're purchasing new Chromebooks, new laptops, new desktops. I believe there's a server project underway as well. Our servers are near the end of their life. A great deal of the technology here is, was towards the end of its life. We've been upgrading it quite a bit recently, and we've got Tina and Jed working hard on that. We've had them working double time this year. There's a new van to serve for bus transportation department. That's actually a replacement of a, an existing van that is towards the end of its life. We're gonna be replacing the big play unit in the elementary school. That has been flagged as, it's towards the end of its life, it's got issues, it's gone, it's been removed, and it is going to need to be replaced. We're gonna be doing repairs to both parking lots. These are projects that we used to do every other year. When we fell into fiscal difficulty, we stopped doing them every other year, and now we would like to go back to it, but for first year, we're gonna have to do both buildings. And during our visual inspection, they mentioned that we need to do some repairs to the tennis and basketball courts as well, so we'll be making those repairs over the summer. And then finally, there will be a snow sweeper for clearing buses covered in snow. So it came to my attention that we were unable to clear our buses quickly this year, we got two feet of snow, and we'd never invested in the equipment that many of the bus drivers, many of the bus companies around here, Quality Bus and all them, use to clear snow off of the buses quickly in the morning. So that is something that we would like to invest in, because we don't wanna lose any time to that. And it's not reasonable to expect the staff to cover it off manually that quickly in the morning, when they also have to travel through for weather conditions.
Most schools use that.
Most schools use this, and many of the bus companies that schools contract with use it as well. Okay, and we go to the last slide. The last slide is more for the townspeople, but for the board, just to have a visual of what's gonna happen to tax rates. This is what's gonna happen, this includes the effects of the compressor station cert, and it has our reduction in taxes, and that's less than 3%, it's actually 2.8 change. But you're looking at, you could take those numbers and just, if you have a $100,000 house, move the decimal over, so your taxes could go up on a $100 house, a couple hundred dollars, or not a couple hundred dollars, I'm sorry, $45.
Yeah, let's keep that straight.
Not 100.
Right.
I moved the decimal over one too many. So, yeah, so you're looking at about a $100,000 house, it could go up about $45 each, each Those are all the initiatives we have in the budget. I gave you guys a copy of the budget, which will also be posted on our website for people to review. If you guys have any questions or concerns or anything that you'd wanted to add to it, from it.
Any questions for Caleb on the board?
And I'd like to add, if anyone in the community has a question or a concern, you can contact either Caleb or my office, and we'll talk to you directly.
I'm always happy to talk about budgets.
Caleb?
It's strange, yes.
I have a question. I don't know if this is a Caleb question or an Alfa Gata question. Do you have sign language? If the students already take the foreign language, can they take sign language as well? Hello?
Yes, they can. We, you know, American Sign Language, because the reading and writing is still in English, so if we have children that are struggling with the French or Spanish, this gives them another option, because in order to graduate from high school, you have to have so many years of foreign language, this fulfills that requirement. If they've already done their juniors in Spanish or juniors in French and would like to take American Sign Language I, please.
They would take it as an elective, right?
They would take it as an elective.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Amador?
Yeah, Caleb, I'm looking at the business, total finance page. I'm happy to see our budget is lower.
Overall, yes.
Overall, and we brought in our business office back into Eldred, which is good for Maybe you mentioned it, but on maintenance of plant, we have 115,000 for building repairs.
Right, so that's gonna be largely, it cost us, last time we did the, resealed the driveways, it was $33,000. We're doing both driveways, and then we're also going to do some repairs to the tennis and basketball courts, and the other 30 or 40,000 is just stuff that we need. And it's very difficult to plan for, I just do a five-year average, things break down all the time.
On insurance, it's the same number, 93,000?
Yeah, they, it came in at 85,000 last year. I don't expect it's gonna go up above that 93. So I left it as is. Same thing with the Boise's administrative charges, those stayed at about level.
That's all, thanks.
Great. That's all? Stay there. So my report's gonna be, I wanna talk about what Caleb said a little bit. So with the compressor station, when Caleb put the budget together, we figured on 55, it was gonna be assessed at 55 million. Back a couple years ago, when Caleb and I were in and out of the assessor's office downtown, that was kinda the number they were looking at. So they were assessed very high last year, and now they're down to 67.
62.
62 million. So we had put the budget together for 55 million, we were very conservative. So to make everything clear, we're not going to get hurt with this budget. We had planned for 55, we actually made out better at 60-some million. And they're not gonna contest it, so we don't have to pay anything back. Caleb was putting money in a separate fund in case we had to do that. So we don't have to do that, so we definitely made out in that aspect. The other thing I wanna touch on, and I wanna make sure that I say it right, so that's why I'm making sure Caleb sits in my seat, so he can hit me if I don't. Last year, we were gonna go up 12%, and we found out that we were gonna lose, we were gonna get money, state aid taken from us. We all got nervous about that, right? So we ended up going to the full cap, or maybe a couple percent, not a couple percent, point something below. We were pretty much at the full cap, and I know the board wasn't comfortable with that, but we had to do that, we had to protect ourselves. So, and I, we had made the statement that if we got our state aid back, and if we didn't get hurt that bad, that we would try to recognize that this year.
And they did take it, and they gave it back.
They did take it, and they gave it back to us. So we recognize that, and what actually are we raising our budget?
What are we raising? Taxes?
Well, taxes are gonna, we're negative, right?
Yeah, we're coming below.
The school is low and negative, that's what I wanna get out there. What's going up is because of the compressor station being assessed at 87 million, down to 62 million, that gap has to be made up. But that isn't us. Our budget is down where we said last year we were gonna try to keep it.
If the budget were to go down, their taxes would go up more.
Right.
That's a good way to put it.
Right. The budget were to go down, the taxes go up. I just wanna make sure that everybody's clear on, on how things are working here, and when you hear the 3%, it's not the school that's doing that.
Correct.
Okay, I wanna make that very clear. We are standing by what we said last year, and thank God for the way things have gone for the last couple of years. We are set, we are physically, financially set, and I believe our physical stress number went from 78 to 16.
Yeah.
So that's a big progress in two and a half, three years. So with that all being said, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear on how the budget is working.
And less than 3%, it's gonna be 2.8.
There you go.
We're keeping it low.
Okay?
We don't want it to hit 3.
Thank you.
Oh, and on a side note, we are doing fuel bids on there. Botini was the lowest, it's $2.09 for fuel oil. That went up from last year by about 10 cents, but it's not, it's still relatively low.
Thank you, Caleb. You just heard my report, that brings us to public comment. Is there any public comment out there? And we'll do it, as we've been doing it all year, Tina. Something comes in, we'll adjust it when it comes in. This is on the consent agenda only. So we're all good? Very good. Which brings us to, I need, I need a motion to approve consent items 6.01 through 9.04.
I'll second.
Nancy made the motion? Second, Amador. We've all had a chance to review it, is there any discussion from the board on the consent items?
That's through 904.
904.
No comment.
No comment, any, any discussion? Okay, I'll take a vote, Nancy.
No.
No?
No, no.
No, I'll take a vote.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Kristen was like, uh-oh, what's going on? Kristen?
Yeah.
Stacy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, all yeas. Okay, what's, I'm sorry. Okay, so there's, there's, there's gonna be correction on 11. Mrs. Ferrer, it's acting, not interim.
Acting.
Acting. Everybody got that? All right, which leaves me, too. Lisa?
Yes.
You can do it now, right?
I need you to raise your right hand, and you can say that passage.
I, Tracy Ferrer, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Eldred Central School Acting Superintendent according to the best of my ability. This position will commence on March 22nd, 2021. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So if anybody's wondering why we did that, whenever there's an acting superintendent or an interim, they have to be sworn in oath to do that position. Old business, new business. District Clerk's announcement of the availability of petitions for the Eldred Central School District Board of Education seat. There is one five-year term available on the board, commencing on July 1st, 2021, and continuing through June 30th, 2026. This seat is currently held by Amador Laput.
Yes, it is.
Is there any other new business to come before the board? With that being said, brings us to the second public comment on anything they wanna discuss. Anybody have any questions about anything that we're doing, or on anything?
I'd like to offer well wishes to Dr. Magano and his surgery, and hoping that he makes a full recovery, so we can take advantage of having him here as long as he can.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
I agree with that. We're gonna have one doctor doing the front, another doctor in the back, they'll be able to see right through.
Are they doing it at the same time?
Sure.
Yep.
All right.
All right, no, nothing, Tina?
I don't see any public comments.
Okay. So I need a motion to enter an executive session for contract and personnel issues.
I'll make that motion.
Kristen, motion?
Second.
Nancy, second, and I intend there'll be no business afterwards. Thank you all, we'll see you next month.